All right. I have the time at 7:01. Call this Board of the Zoning Appeals and Zoning Commission to order. You guys want to stand and join for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart. All right. So I'm just going to go right down our list here of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Mr. Lurker.
Present.
Mrs. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Blakely. Mr. Scholler.
Yes.
Mr. Cox. And Mrs. Albert.
Yes.
Board of Zoning Commission, Mr. Jean.
Here.
Mr. Rieger.
Present.
Mr. Glander.
Present.
Mr. Lee.
Yeah.
Mr. Jacoby.
Present.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
All right. Welcome all visitors tonight. I had two presentations that I knew of. Mr. Cox would like to go at the end, so Mr. Lurker, would you like to go ahead?
You all got the handout that I presented, the background paper on hydrogeologic conditions of the township. Oh, yeah, I'm just going to talk for a few minutes. In the 1990 timeframe, Donna Moon was Commissioner of Montgomery County. It was her intent that the next landfill would be outside the city of Dayton. So the county selected 12 parcels, three of which were in the township. So it was pretty obvious that they were targeting us. So in response, we formed a citizens group, the Germantown Area Concerned Citizens Group, and we raised funds and we hired a hydrogeologic firm to study of the township's hydrogeology. And we had 20 volunteers on which who were with me on that committee. And we collected 300 unregistered wells and their well logs. And we presented those to the hydrogeologist, Julie Wetherington Rice. And she combined those with about 150 wells that had already been registered. And she hand drew four maps. And they're here. I don't want you to take the time to show you that. But there was hydro soil, the bedrock elevation, groundwater surface, and then there was the topo, which is the surface of the land. So we have four layers. And I hired the University of Miami geology department, and they digitized it. And I've had those on about 10, three and a half inches. And I haven't been able to locate them, but I gave a set to the township, but they haven't found them either. But if we do find those, I'll see if we can match the format, say, the Montgomery County Soil and Waters GIS system. So we might have a possibility of having a way of looking at it digitally. Now, let's see. So in my background paper, I'm putting suggestions for modifications to the zoning resolution to protect the sensitive hydrogeology. And one of those are the aspects for a landfill. Folks here, we precluded the sighting of that county landfill based on her report, which shows that this township is clearly unsuitable for a landfill sighting. At the time we were doing that, there were at least four companies that were interested in citing a landfill here in Montgomery County. And I don't, I remember one, they actually put up options on a landfill site up on Union Road in Perry Township. So there was that issue. So I do see a strong need to put standards in our zoning resolution to preclude citing of the landfill in the township. Also, I was the initial chair for the wellhead protection quote area for Germantown's wellfield. And half of that is in the township. So we need to consider standards to protect that wellfield area. And in that background paper, I talked about the salt pile in Camden. The levels of salt in their wellfield was approaching seawater, 3.5% salt. So, now, let's see. Is there any questions or comments on that paper?
Your maps will show, I assume, more that these sites were located. I just, just my own curiosity, more where they've generally located here in the township.
Somebody help me. We'll figure this out. This is county line. County line. The big parcel was 1,500 acres. Same size as the rest of the park. That one. These brown shaded spots were actually hydro soils. So they were trying to cite a landfill with all that hydro soil. So that's one. The other one. And this was the third one. This is County Line Road, 7.5. Put in bag here. That must have been us.[417.02]
Okay.
Okay, great.
The other?
Uh, yeah, the gentleman up there.
You better at least take you to dinner. That's right. I have another one.
Cheers.
You mean this coffee? Here, I'm going to go and wash my hands. Okay. We're going home anyway, right?
So basically, Mark Cross, again, thanks for being here. I have a list of policy changes I want to present to the BZA and the Zoning Commission tonight. And again, some of these I'd like to institute, some of these I certainly would like your input as far as what you think. Number one, I would like all BZA and Zoning Commission meetings to be completed and distributed to all members within two weeks of the meeting. And the rationale behind that is, you know, the Zoning Commission, you meet every three months, or the zoning appeals, you never know when you're going to meet. You could meet, you know, once, once a year, you could meet twice a year. By having the minutes ready, two weeks after each meeting, they're fresh in your mind, you can look at them, see if there's any corrections. Then, then when the meeting comes up, you can just pull them up again. So I think it just makes the things easier versus trying to remember what you did three months ago or six months ago. So I think that should be a good thing. All meeting dates for the entire of the BZA and the Zoning Commission should be placed on the Germantown webpage. And this is what the trustees do, they put all their meetings on there so you know the dates. Please add a disclaimer that scheduled BZA meetings may be canceled if there is no business to discuss. Meeting dates may only be changed with approval by the board chair person. I think that's important. So the regular BZA meetings we set, went through the calendar, are 1-11 today, 2-8, 3-8, 4-12, 5-10, 6-14, 7-12, 8-9, 9-13, 10-12, which is a Wednesday because the trustee meeting is on that Tuesday because of Columbus Day, then 11-8 and 12-13 again. By putting those on the webpage, just have a list, it allows the members to block those, those dates off. You, you may not, BZA may not have a meeting on there, but you know that there may be a meeting, so, uh, so that way you can have as many members attend. Zoning Commission regular meetings, again, 1-11, 4-5, 7-5 and 10-4. Does that sound reasonable to you, to, to do it that way? Kind of locks things in, so there's no, no, uh, problem as far as when the meetings are scheduled.
I might say that in past years, we've had need for special meetings.
Yeah, and you can always add those, these are just for the regular meetings, you know, so special meetings can be, can be called anytime. Last night, at the trustee meeting, I, I went ahead and changed the BZA and we were voted to change the BZA and the Zoning Commission terms for the alternates from two years, from two years back to five years. And the rationale is, if you look at the ORC, the alternates really have any power that a regular member has, because especially the Zoning Commission, last year it seemed like there was always one alternate up there sitting there. So if the alternates have the same powers as a sitting member, I feel they ought to have the same terms. Well, you know, make sure they're, they can continue on and, and learn more, so. So that's already been done. I would like to standardize the Board of Zoning Appeal and the Zoning Commission public meeting format, so both you boards are using the same script for, so that for the zoning appeal, the zoning commission, it would be for rezoning cases, uh, where you have, you know, the, the whole script as far as people giving testimony and all that. That's no big rush, but it's kind of make, I think it makes it a little easier. Make sure that all meetings are publicized on the township Facebook page and township webpage with the webex meeting info included at least ten days before the meeting. This is in addition to the ORC mandated notifications and a notice placed in the township door. We seem to have problems with meetings, uh, not placed on the Facebook page or the webpage until a few days before the meeting at times. So it doesn't, it's not fair to the public to know when meetings are, it's unfair sometimes for us to find out, you know, the information about it. So we're going to try to put those on at least ten days before. I will continue the current protocol for advertising for open board positions with applicants sending their resumes to the trustee zoning commissioner, which is, which is me. And an ad for the open alternate zoning commission meeting will be, position will be one in the 113 and 120 Germantown press, as well as on the township Facebook and web, web pages. I will be reviewing resumes and hope to make a decision before the next trustee meeting. So if you know anybody that wants to be on the zoning commission, you know, let them know, they just need to send a, go to the web, go to the webpage and send me an email with their resume. So hopefully we get that taken care of. Uh, this, just a reminder, the zoning commission can never deliberate in private. That was my fault last year, we got in trouble with that. You can never deliberate in private, everything has to be in an open meeting, so you can't.
That's an executive session.
There is no executive session for the zoning commission. So that, that brings up another question. BZA can deliberate, deliberate in private, it's really not an executive session. You go down below, uh, BZA, are executive sessions necessary? Ohio Meeting, Open Meetings Act, page 107, 2B, quasi judicial proceedings, which is what the BZA is, they're basically judge, jury and executioner. Accordingly, when a public body is acting in its quasi judicial capacity, the public body does not have to vote publicly to adjourn for deliberations or take action following those deliberations. Executive sessions are kind of funny things, and it, it allows an open meeting to go into private deliberations. However, there has to be a motion to go into executive session, and the reason for going into executive session has to be stated at, in that motion. There's only eight things you can go into executive session for. None of them really apply to the Board of Zoning Appeals, actually. You guys, all you have to do is say, we're going to deliberate in private, you don't have to make a motion, you can go do it, you can come back, we're back. So they really, they really, to, to, to go into executive session in the, in the BZA is not really a procedural allowance, because you don't need to do it either way. So, but even you couldn't, because none of those eight, eight reasons to go into executive session apply to you guys, you know, so. Just to keep that in mind. And that's all in the sunshine law, if you ever pull that up, Ohio State Auditor, Secretary of State, I should say, just go Ohio sunshine laws, and it has a whole section on executive sessions, very interesting. I don't know if visitor comments are needed to be included in the BZA or zoning commission public meetings. This is, can address those, those boards under oath during specific time, that's really up to you. You can have them, I don't know if it's necessary. BZA, especially as a case by case basis, you always have a case in front of you, you just don't need to, with the exception of this meeting, you don't need to just have a meeting, uh, but anyway. But again, that's, that's, it's probably not necessary, you can do it, it's always nice to be a little open. Again, I want to thank Mr. Blakely, Mr. Cox, Mr. Walters and Mr. Glanders, that could be, each has decided to serve another term, I thank, thank them for that. Oh, I thank all you guys, I mean, your, your dedication, your maturity, which is not a bad thing in this case, and your knowledge adds a lot to this, these committees, and it's really, and I tell people zoning is where it's at, if you're going to have problems in a township, it's usually around zoning, so, we need you all. It's the bottom line of, thanks, thanks for serving. Would, Mrs., I, we've talked a little bit about this, would the BZA and the zoning members like, zoning commission members like to have their names listed on the Germantown township webpage under zoning section?
Can I make a comment on that?
You can.
Yes, thank you. I have some concern about the Board of Zoning Appeals being listed on the website, and the reason is, um, if somebody's coming up before the BZA and they contact one of the board members, and we'll, if we have made contact, we would have to recuse from the hearing.
Exactly, yeah.
So I don't really want to encourage that.
Yeah, that's, that, you know, most, most townships, I know Washington Township does list the members, that, that's something I brought up. It would just be another avenue, say someone, you know, do nobody, had a zoning question, didn't know Haley, didn't know anybody else, but they knew Dan Lee from church or work or whatever, and they had Dan Lee's number, they could possibly reach out to you and say, hey, you know, and you could, you know, put them in the, in right avenue of where to go for information, but I, I have no problem not doing it. And I, I, that's a very good, good point that Pete brought up, because BZA has to be totally independent. If someone calls you up and asks for your opinion.
I can't give it.
You can't give it, exactly, you know, so that's, that's, it's, so I, I, I agree, let's scratch that.
Well, there's, there's another thing I'd like to bring up. You mentioned that they can't go in executive sessions before hearing, the BZA members can't discuss a case between themselves, you can only discuss it at.
At the, exactly, yeah.
So that's.
Yeah. And then, and some seminars, I, I went to a seminar that said BZA members really even shouldn't visit the site. They can look at the maps and the descriptions during the meeting.
We, we had a, one of Joe's colleagues came, he was a zoning attorney, and he advised us to not appear on the site.
Yeah, yeah, which, which I, I have heard that before, so. I mean, it, it seemed like when I was on BZA, I always went and looked at the property, which we didn't know was nothing. BZA is a funny animal, again, because you have a lot of power, but you have to be totally independent and totally non judgmental until you start sitting in those seats and hearing what, what the case is going to be involved, so, so, yeah.
Is that the opposite then for us? Because I mean, we've always been, you know, if we have something coming up concerning certain properties, we've always been curious, do the drive by and take a look and see what we think.
I, I don't, you know, and Joe may be able to answer this, I don't think zoning commission is under the same sort of rules, again, because you are not a quasi judicial board. You know, you, you aren't under those, those same rules as the BZA, as far as being non partial until you get into that meeting, so, I, I defer.
I don't know the answer to that, but I can find out.
I would, I would say zoning commission is, is free to do that, to look at the property, yeah.
You've always done that.
Right, yeah, yeah, I don't.
You just about have to.
You just about have to when you're talking, you know, properties and just to get a better idea, so, yeah.
Going back to your, if you're not a BZA, I don't agree with that, because we've seen it for several reasons. One, people are calling, like you just mentioned, like if you give examples, I'll speak from my example, then I wouldn't want a bunch of calls coming in saying about something. We hear complaints on the zoning commission, you know, we had a public.
Yeah, yeah.
There's, I'd like to hear them, I think. And it, it, I think it also goes to your point number seven, that we cannot, the zoning commission cannot deliberate either. To me, I consider the same thing, so we ought to discuss some issue, and the same as delivering private, it's just this one person.
Right, sure, yeah, exactly, yeah.
And it contradicts the reason we cannot deliberate for any reason, unless you should not be collaborating with or contacting or taking calls from people to call us up.
Yeah, that are, that are part of that hearing.
They come to meetings, they can send an email.
Exactly, yeah.
Or they do it, I don't give a reason, or, or even contact.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I agree totally with.
Not how you call it, we're here in time, so.
Yeah, exactly. And they, and they, they will know when the meetings are, when they're posted, yeah.
I think calls are suffered, plus.
Yeah, to, yeah, to talk about something, yeah, so I agree. Yeah, and those should be coming to, to myself or to Haley, yeah.
And again, not your home, they should be coming to your township.
Yeah, but you know, I, I've, I've got my phone, my home, home, home phone number here, if you ever have any questions for me too, so we can give you some guidance, so. Yeah, zoning.
In that case, that's a little different.
Yeah, it is, uh, yeah.
It's a discussion with individuals and private, for which you may be liable for something.
Right, yeah, yeah, they may bring that up and say, well, I talked to Mr. Lee and he said, they bring that up in the meetings, so. Yeah, so I, I, I totally agree, I just wanted to bring it up, yeah, again. Is there any other questions you have right now, do you have any problems with any of this stuff? Just trying to kind of clean things up and make things run maybe a little easier.
I, I appreciate it, because we've talked among ourselves in the past, it's been wide open, you know, that we, we've had to come up with our own members, you know, recruit from the community and appreciate your involvement as, as a trustee, because we've not, not had a lot of involvement. We've had to actually ask, ask trustee, you know, the zoning trustee to come for a meeting, so we can get introduced.
So, yeah, so, yeah, and I'm happy to help out anyway, yeah, so.
Yeah, that being said, there is a relationship between the trustee for zoning and the boards, and there is a distance, right?
There, there is.
Do you mind elaborating on that?
So basically, as far as, and, and this again is a seminar that said, especially BZA, you stay, you know, trustees should not attend those, that meeting. Currently, it's the zoning commission too, where you, where you're hearing a zoning, a rezoning case. Again, because with the trustee being there, it might theoretically might influence the board how they vote, uh, so, so, and, and tonight, after this meeting is over, I'm not going to attend the eight o'clock BZA meeting, you know, so, yeah, so. Now Haley has heard from our, our legal representative that says, okay, but I think it's, again, from what I understand, it probably isn't the best idea, just stay distant, yeah. Because especially zoning commission, the decisions you make go in front of the trustees. So I shouldn't be at your meeting where you're going to make a decision and I'm going to be deciding on the next trustee meeting, so there's a definite conflict of interest there, so. So in both cases, you're, you're exactly correct, there, there has to be that decision, so, no problem there. Even though I'd like to see you guys, I appreciate it, I will not attend the meetings where there, there's a decision being made, yeah. Anything else? Okay, guys, I appreciate it.
I have another thing, just thinking about that. Other guidelines, other than it sounds like it's not real clear about when that type of discussion takes place, what's considered a private deliberation, like for example, if you did provide, if you had some insights that you could provide, which line, where do we cross the line, uh, getting information and?
Yeah, I think that, and, and I, I sent you a, a recent email about the, the decision on the agritourism case, and again, for, I, I have no problem for informational purposes sending you something like that, because I'm not telling you to do anything about it or make any decisions, it's just to let you know, this is what's going on in the community. Because I, does anybody else take the Daily News here? No. So anyway, so what I, the Daily News actually has a lot of good coverage, good local coverage, so, as long as, as just informational, I think that's fine. Again, it's not trying to sway you anyway, that's just telling you, hey, this is what's going on in Miami Township, you know.
As any citizen, any resident.
Any, any resident, exactly, so as, as an average Joe. Yeah, yeah, sure, you know, as long as that, as I list that as informational, not, not trying to sway you anyway, either way about the issue, just tell you, this is what's going on, so, uh, so you're aware, yeah, so.
Thank you, Cross, could I, could I ask a question? What is the best way, you know, as, as we go through, we hear the zoning cases, you know, many times that causes us to review the zoning resolution. And, and there are times when we have suggestions for the commission. What is the proper way to express those to the commission? Is it to come to the commission meeting and say that I'm a member of the zoning, zoning Board of Appeals and we, as an individual, whatever, would like to pass on the idea? Is that the right way to do it?
Sally, what do you think? I think if you attend the meeting as a, just a regular citizen versus saying, I'm a member of the Board of Zoning Appeal. So you're bringing up an issue that the zoning commission should look at, you know, as, as a, just a resident of Germantown.
Yeah, I could, I could do that, that would be a way that I would express it, but really, you know, it was, I mean, the reason that it's happening is because the Board of Zoning Appeals maybe was struggling with interpretation of something.
Uh-huh, yeah.
But we can, we can figure that out, I just, generally speaking, what's the right way to get information to the commission?
I don't have any, any question, being like the middle person, middle man, you say this is, you know, and then, then I can bring it to the commission that way. That, that's basically my job, is the zoning commissioner, so, yeah. Good.
I appreciate it, you said that out, by the way, I read through that. You brought back memories of some of the things that we talked about.
Right.
Sounds like that's still quite a hot issue, yeah. Even though one person here that visited that particular, whatever they want to call it, and said how, with, what the conditions were like, it doesn't sound good.
Yeah, so, yeah, be, be aware of it.
Thanks for sending that.
Yeah, no problem. All right, thanks again, gentlemen and ladies, appreciate it.
Yes, and since we have the privilege of having the BZA members here, I'd just like to ask a general question, are there things that we could do to make your job easier? You know, from, from the resolution side of things, make, make it a little clearer or, you know, often you come up with situations where interpretation is, is a challenge.
Well, like, like today, that background paper was giving you some examples of what standards should be in the zoning to protect the hydrogeology, that, that's an example. I, I saw a void there, so that's why I presented that. In the past, I've, and before you, you people, I've presented to Harris Township's zoning resolution aspects regarding their well field protection areas. Maybe that's what you use to modify the current zoning resolution. Basically, if there is no standard in this zoning resolution, an example would be the digital light sign that was put on the tavernac, a funded light tavernac. We had no standard to figure against on that. I think I came before the board and told you that, we didn't have a standard for that. Another example, I think I came before the board to, to discuss standards for citing solar panels, and that they are a major conflict with the aircraft's landing. So if you have an airfield, you're coming in, can't land if you have reflected light coming off solar panels, so. That's not a major problem for Germantown, but it is for Beaver Creek Township, because they're in the path to Wright Patterson, so, that, that's an example. That's why I've come before the board in the past, saying that, like, we just had a case of last month regarding a sighting of a, she wanted to operate a farm stand, sell produce and farm product, a product, and it was just south of the 725, so we put a restriction on there on, on noise. There is no noise standard in the zoning resolution.
For agricultural land, industrial, not for agricultural, you zone properties, for industrial, there is, not for agricultural.
So that, so we, we came up with our own restriction on that case, so.
I had to Pete's example, you know, we, I assume that the reason there's no noise resolution or noise ordinance or decibel level in the agriculture, agricultural areas is because, you know, I assume that, didn't want to put it in because the tractors sometimes are loud and things like that, nobody cares about tractors. But if, you know, with the, with the increase in agritourism, people do care about the noise levels after dark and, and even during the day. But under our ordinance right now, there's no, no just even, you know, um, just generalized standard, and I think it would be very easy to say that, you know, here's the noise standard in the agricultural area and this, this, this exempts tractors and whatever other things we think should be exempted, but wouldn't exempt the agritourism type things.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but when we were on this subject, didn't we, Mark, I think I remember you involved with this, didn't we come up with the conclusion that the Ohio, that the ORC leaves wide open agritourism, that it's really, you know, our hands are, are tied largely? Is, is that, was that a conclusion that?
I thought it was, yes.
In the most cases, we just got examples without it.
Yeah, it's like a shield they have, so, um.
Like a wedding bar.
Yeah.
That falls under agritourism.
Yeah.
Under the farm stand exception.
Yeah, it's, it's a, an area greatly in flux, and there are a lot of lawsuits going on, and, and the, I think the assumption is that the, what, Ohio legislature is going to have to tighten up on that. They kind of just blew it wide open.
That is where it came down in most cases, that we were deferring based on waiting for something to, had to be developed a way where we, to be, to be, we knew we expected this might be happening sooner rather than later.
But there, there are other zoning classifications, there's some business, there's industrial that exists, but residential, and there's not a noise standard there either in businesses. Some businesses are permitted in those areas, so they might not hurt, especially for things that don't fall under agritourism, have that kind of standard.
That's definitely subcategory, right?
And I think even under the agritourism, at least, I, I know there are many townships who are at least establishing a decibel level, um, in, I guess, put it simply, I don't know that it's necessary to have a large debate, but I don't, I think that there are things that we can do to protect our township.
Like rural nature.
So are there other things that we can do to help the BZA? I mean, I guess it's the feedback from, from what you have to do. I, I've never been in, as far as I know, on one of your sessions, so I don't know what you struggle with when you're trying to go through the resolution and figure out how to apply it to a case.
I, I wouldn't say there's anything else right now, um, I just think that as we go through the year, the year, I think in the past, I, I don't remember how many years I've been on this work, but it's been, um, and I think that when we would run into things, we just wouldn't do anything with it, and I think it might be helpful to pass it along. If you, if you think there's a good point there, great, and if not, that's, that's fine too. But I just, I think that, you know, I'm just encouraging our board to, as we're going through it, to pay attention, and if there are things we can do that we think might improve things, just pass it along.
Thoughts?
I agree. That would help everybody.
We don't want to make your job harder.
We're too easy.
No, it's fine, I think we all, I think we all care about this township, we're all happy to help.
That's why we're here. Before you get the big bucks.
Yeah, the big bucks.
What are those?
Fifty dollars a meeting.
I don't have any further.
Are we through with that section of the meeting then? With, for guarantee.
Yep.
You have a hearing at eight?
Want to set up your next meeting then?
Yes, before we conclude.
Before the board.
Uh, so with the schedule as what Mr. Cross gave us, it looks like the zoning commission's next meeting will be April 5th, and then the Board of Zoning Appeals will be April 12th.
Oh, no, we could.
February?
If, if you're necessary.
February 8th?
Eight.
I was making sure there was no holiday. With that, with the BZA, I did want to ask, I guess this does fall under the zoning commission also, so when we have a case, um, for example, um, in the past, as soon as I get the information from the person submitting it and I've got everything, that's when I start and I schedule everything, right? And so then that would determine when we met. Since we're doing set dates, I can, like the, the county, when I have to take them something, I have to get it to them on a certain day so that they can hear it on their next, during their next meeting. Is that how you guys want me to do it, or do you want to continue to have other meetings if it comes along before our next meeting? See what I'm saying?
If, if the case comes up, schedule it for the next available month, as long as you have ten day window to do the public announcement.
Right.
Otherwise, move it to the next month.
Okay.
Do not hold any special meetings.
Okay, so then what I will do after tonight, since we have our schedule, um, I will make a document like the county gives to me every year, that says, if you want it heard, on this day, you have to get me the information by this day, to give me that window. Is that good?
Right.
Awesome. All right, do we have any other business?
If there's any other business, I move away to turn.
Do I have a second?
I'll take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone, we are adjourned at 7:48.